All right, I'm going to bring the Finance and Law Subcommittee to order. It's Wednesday, July 1st, 2020. First item on tonight's agenda is roll call. Mr. Souza.
Present.
Mr. Fiore.
Present.
Also in attendance is we have Mr. Cabral and Ms. Monahan. We have student activity requests. There aren't any. We have bills payable in an amount of $285,312.92. Mr. Souza.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have, I just have, I think, one or two questions. Ms. Monahan, welcome. And on page four, Mohawk. I don't remember what that one's for. It's paid by E-Rate.
Correct. It is our Chromebook cases that we purchased for, it's needed for the remote learning. So all of our Chromebooks will be able to be secured in a nice case that students will be able to take home.
That's one of them lockable jobs we talked about when we buy the set. Was it 30 to a case? Is that what it is?
No, these are actually for the individual Chromebooks. So it's like, almost like a briefcase, but it's a total protector for the Chromebook.
So when they carry them, they're not just carrying them in their arms, could slip out of them, or whatever the case may be. It's like a mini briefcase that holds the Chromebook.
Exactly.
That makes a lot of sense because...
If you don't remove them out of the case, the case serves as a full protector and the child isn't, the student doesn't even need to take out the Chromebooks out of the case itself.
That's fantastic. That was a smart move. That's fantastic. Mr. Chairman, I just have one more. Nope. I'm all set. I don't have any more marks. Oh, Ms. Monahan, Evergreen. That's two, that's a special ed tuition.
What page do you want, sir, please?
Sorry, two. I mean, 23, 23, I think it is.
Evergreen is a tuition for one student for the month of June.
That's coming out of a grant? 23?
It's a circuit breaker.
Oh, sorry, a circuit breaker, okay. Mr. Chairman, I'm all set. Move approval on the bills payable warrant as presented for $285,312.92.
Second.
Motion has been made in second, and on a roll call, Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Fiore.
Yes.
Then I vote yes. Third item on the agenda is a facilities update. Ms. Monahan, quickly.
Absolutely, I'll give you a quick one. We have been beginning to forecast the PPE, our protective gear, that we would need to purchase going back to school. Desi has given us some type of a template to go and figure out how many masks we will need to purchase. So we've been, I've submitted that to the Department of Education. But also what we have done is we have included some PPEs for our summer programs. Some of them are going to be here at the school, at Taunton High School, and there will be a Title I program that will be happening offsite. But we will be providing PPEs for students that are going to be participating and also to staff. And we have welcomed back our staff, our central office staff, and also summer staff here into our buildings. Although our buildings are still closed, we have provided all PPEs and everything with signage throughout our area and provided any type of PPE that staff may need. And that concludes my facilities update.
So is the building open as far as people coming in to see someone?
We have, and people to call and make an appointment. So here at Pol, we do have one area, one door entrance, and it is the main entrance to Pol. And every visitor that does stop by, we do have a sign-in sheet with, that we are following, just like the City Hall has been doing, that we ask any visitor, record their time that they're in, the date that they're in, and their phone number, just in case we need to get in contact with them.
Thank you.
I have some questions on that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have some questions on that, but I'll ask them during the, during the regular meeting, during the update, because I'm sure, are you going to have a portion of that for facilities?
I believe we are going to be talking a little bit about that, yes.
Yeah, so I just, you know, I just had a question on, is the board, are you currently working with the Board of Health to make sure from now until the time school starts, we're following their protocol, but as well as after school starts?
Yes, we are definitely doing that. We've been working with the city. We're following the same thing that the city has, has put in place. And yes, we are going ahead and following their protocols.
Does the Board of Health have to sign off on what you're doing?
We do, they don't have to sign off on it, but like physically sign off on it, but we do go ahead and share our plans. But again, they haven't, if you want to say, signed off, because we are following the same thing that the City Hall is doing.
That makes a lot of sense, because if they're signing off for them, and they're in the building, they're going to be okay with us. Motion adjourned, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all is in favor?
Aye.
Voted, so voted, we're adjourned. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay, call the meeting to order. Can we have the roll call, please, Mrs. Fagan? You're still on mute. Okay.
I am all set. Ms. Doherty?
Present.
Mr. Palowski?
Present.
Mr. Fiore?
Present.
Mrs. Fagan's present. Mr. Martin?
Present.
Mrs. Almeida? Oh, Mrs. Almeida?
Present.
Okay. Mr. DeMello?
Present.
Mr. Souza?
Present.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Present. Thank you. If you'd like to do the prayer in the moment of silence?
Yes. Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy, and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for the opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care. And we'd also like to have a moment of silence for Brenda Dorsey, who's a longtime secretary for the Taunton Public Schools and a personal favorite of Mr. Clary. She was his secretary. So we ask our blessings for her and express our sorrow to her family, like a moment of
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan.
Welcome.
Approval of the minutes from June 17th and June 24th, 2020.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mrs. Fagan, roll call, please.
Yes. Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mrs. Almeida? Got one out of order there. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Okay. All set.
Thank you. And now we have public input. There should be a number up on the screen right now. That number is 508-821-1221. So I think we'll just take a minute or two here to see if anybody calls in, and if not,
Just so everyone knows, one minute has passed. I think we said two minutes.
Two minutes, okay. Okay, I have just about two minutes. Amazing how long two minutes it are when you're sitting here. So we have received no calls, so we can move on from public input. On to the superintendent's report. Mr. Cabral?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I do have some guests with us this evening. We do have Bella Jones. We do have Tara Gannon, and we also have Christine Monahan. So in my superintendent's report, I'll begin by recognizing two new appointments. So I want to start off by acknowledging or recognizing Bella Jones. It's with great pride and excitement that I announced the appointment of Mrs. Annabella Jones as the principal of the Elizabeth Pol Elementary School. Mrs. Jones and her family are longtime residents of Taunton, and she and her husband have one daughter who attends Taunton Public Schools. Mrs. Jones has been an outstanding employee of Taunton Public Schools since 2002. She is bilingual and has a strong background in literacy. Her career in Taunton includes experience as a reading specialist at both Parker Middle School and the Letty Preschool, Letty Elementary School, and assistant principal at the Elizabeth Pol Elementary School. Most recently, Mrs. Jones has been the principal of the Galligan School, which will be sorely missed. Mrs. Jones has demonstrated exceptional leadership skills through the work she has done at the Galligan Elementary School, where she served, which will serve her well in a new position. Mrs. Jones was instrumental in helping to bring ST Math to all our elementary schools after successfully piloting the program at Galligan. In addition, her strong literacy background helped to ensure that BSRI reading model continues to be fully implemented throughout all grades at the Galligan Elementary School. Mrs. Jones is a proud graduate of Taunton High School. She holds a bachelor's degree from Bridgewater State University, a master's degree from Framingham State University, and is a certify, is a certificate in advanced graduate study in educational leadership and management from Pittsburgh State University. Mrs. Jones is well-respected by both staff and parents alike. She has over 20 years of educational experience, grades K through 12. She is a caring, collaborative, and holds high expectations for all our learners. Please join me in welcoming Mrs. Bella Jones to the E-Pol Elementary School. Welcome, Bella. And Bella, is there anything you'd like to say at this point?
Thank you so much. I'm excited, as you can imagine. It's bittersweet. I did love my Gators. It's a phenomenal building. It's the great students, great families, you all know, great staff. So I'm sad to be going, but I am happy to be coming back to Pol School. You know, I was there for quite some time, so it's like coming, you know, it's like going away for college, five-year plan, you know, and now returning home. So there's a lot that has changed, but a lot I think that is the same. So I'm excited to start my new endeavor, plus I know that, you know, Tara is coming over to Galligan, and I know she's going to do great things there, and so I feel like I'm leaving Galligan in really great hands. So that, of course, is also very helpful. So thank you.
Congratulations, Bella.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to use this opportunity to also recognize an additional appointment. So in addition to the appointment of Mrs. Jones to the Elizabeth Pol Elementary School, I am also proud to announce that former Hopewell Elementary School Principal Tara Gannon will be taking on a new role as principal of the Harold H. Galligan Elementary School. Mrs. Gannon has worked for the Taunton Public Schools for the last nine years, serving as principal of the Hopewell School, where she has had much success. Two of her greatest assets are her ability to collaborate and her ability to bring diverse groups of people together to address a common goal. Mrs. Gannon has demonstrated exceptional leadership skills through the work that she has done at Hopewell, which will continue to serve her well at the Galligan Elementary School. Under her leadership, the Hopewell School has thrived, having steadily increased student achievement while also meeting the social emotional needs of the student body. Their educational philosophy is based on the uncompromising belief of the whole child. She believes that educators must support and provide guidance with all parts of students' lives. She accomplishes, some accomplishments include being a mentor with the big brother, big sister, and receiving the Red Apple Teaching, Red Apple Award for Teaching. Mrs. Gannon attended Bridgewater State University, where she obtained a Bachelor of Science in Elementary Education and Special Education, and Cambridge College, where she completed her Master of Education Program in Educational Leadership and Certificate of Advanced Graduate Studies from American International College. So we want to congratulate Tara on her new appointment at the Galligan Elementary School. Very happy to have her on board and very happy to have her in Taunton. So congratulations, Tara.
Thank you very much.
Is there anything you'd like to say to the committee, Tara?
It's just been an honor, a privilege, is working with the wonderful children of the city of Taunton and an amazing staff, terrific parents and families. So it's been an honor, and I'm so looking forward to bringing, you know, some of the things I've learned about Taunton into the Galligan School and meeting those families and staff members. So thank you for having me, and I'm looking so forward to starting anew with whatever the fall brings us.
Thank you, Tara. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So this last one, I was hesitant to even do this, because I don't want to, I don't want to say goodbye. I think it's just going to be a new beginning, maybe a new opportunity. But I want to congratulate and take a small, thank Dr. Christine Monahan for everything she has done. And I think it was about 14 months that she's been with us. I think it was last May, May 2019, that we were first introduced to Christine Monahan. And boy, did she come as advertised. So a little over a year ago, the Elizabeth Pol Elementary Learning Community was introduced to Dr. Christine Monahan. Coming in mid-year is never an easy task. However, Dr. Monahan hit the ground running and has not stopped running since day one. Filled with boundless energy, along with an unrivaled passion for teaching and learning, Dr. Christine Monahan transformed the culture and climate of the school overnight. Prior to arriving in town, Dr. Monahan completed a very successful career as a classroom teacher, a mathematics curriculum specialist, and an elementary school principal. Upon her retirement, she began a new career as an educational consultant, insisting school leaders with improving the quality of education delivered in their schools. In addition to her work as an education, educational consultant, Dr. Monahan also published two books titled Math Sense and Common Core Sense. However, what truly separates Dr. Monahan apart from her peers is a boundless energy and love for her students. She is true, she is truly in her natural element when surrounded by students entrusted into her care. Dr. Monahan truly understands that it takes, what it takes to educate the whole child, whether reading to a group of students in a classroom or leading a school-wide assembly. Dr. Monahan always places the needs and well-being of her students first. Her passion and enthusiasm for learning is contagious. Blessed with a high emotional IQ, it is hard not to be captivated by her infectious persona, which can brighten any room. In addition to leaving her mark on the Elizabeth Pol Elementary School, Dr. Monahan has left her mark on the Taunton Public Schools. Despite being in Taunton for less than two years, her commitment to the Elizabeth Pol students, families, and staff is unrivaled. She will sorely be missed, but her impact at the Elizabeth Pol School will always be remembered. And I already got it to commit to being part of Taunton in some capacity, a little bit of pressure, in some capacity next year. So we look forward to possibly continuing our work with Dr. Monahan in the near future. So congratulations, Christine. And again, I cannot thank you personally for what I have learned from you, but what we've all learned from you and your impact on the Taunton Public Schools. You definitely made an impact, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cabral. Yeah, those are tough words to listen to when they're being said about yourself. I mean, wonderful words about Bella, wonderful words about Tara. I could listen to those all day long. When it comes to hearing things about yourself, it's a little bit more difficult. But I want to say thank you to Taunton. I had been with five previous school districts before coming to Taunton, but this was my first foray into a really, a real urban setting. I was in Newton for six years, and Newton is somewhat of an urban setting, but not in the same way as Taunton. I learned so much by walking into Taunton, Massachusetts, that I never believed could have happened. I was originally coming for two months, and Mr. Cabral kind of pulled me in, and the children of E-Pol School and the teachers of E-Pol School and the parents of E-Pol School pulled me in as well for this current year, which has certainly been a year filled with ups and downs. But after 47 years in the business, I found myself still learning, and that's what I hope I get to model to all of the children who have been within a tiny bit of my sphere of influence, that it is still about remanding a lifelong learner. And that's what I got out of Taunton amongst making many new friends and many new relationships that I will take with me. And I'm telling you, and I say it to the kids all the time, that you've left footprints on my heart. They've left, all of Taunton has left an immeasurable footprint on my heart, and I thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Cabral. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Christine. Congratulations, Dr. Monahan. Your office, there's a little pouting gift for you in your office. Sorry, continuing on with my report. Next in my report, I'll talk a little bit about, I'll talk more, or go more in depth in the next portion of our meeting, when we talk about our reopening guidance, the reopening guidance we received from the state. So I will spend some time about that in the next section, next part of our report of our meeting. And I do have the leadership team here to provide you with an update on the task forces, or the seven task forces that have started this work back on May 27th, as far as preparing for reopening. But what I do want to share at this point is we're proud of what we're going to have in place for the summer. So we've been working really hard with the mayor's leadership team to make sure that we are able to provide daycare to our families. So Taunton Extended Day will be providing daycare service as of now to 40 students at the high school. So any family that is in need of hiring extended day service, they can reach out to Donna Ross, who oversees the program, and her phone number is 508-821-1220. This information is located on our website. We are also proud to announce that we'll be launching a virtual summer high school, summer program. So any students in grades eight to 11 can participate in the program, and it is credit bearing. Students who are interested in participating in the high school summer learning program can reach out to Mr. Eric Lefave. He can be reached at 508-821-1115. Dr., sorry, Mrs. Mulrooney, who oversees our special education department, I believe has approximately 30, was it 37, 33? Sorry, 31 families will be participating in our extended year, extended school year services. So again, 31 of the, so 31 of those students will be, 31 students will be participating in person, and we're hoping to provide our families with some remote services as well in addition to the in-person. So we're trying to do a combination of both and obviously modify our plans as the guidance at the state and from Desi loosens, so we can bring more students and more people back to our schools. And this has been monument, this has been a Herculean task for Mrs. Mulrooney, identifying the families and also training our staff to be able to deliver services. Well, Mr. Barata has been working with Mrs. Coep and Mrs. Tammy Toakosmonis to provide Title I support to our students, which will be a push-in model to provide services at three sites, Paul Bunker, Bristol Commons, in Highland Hills. So again, anyone who's interested in participating in that program should reach out to Mrs. Tammy Toakosmonis via email, and her email is located on our website. Taunton High School Athletic Department will be sponsoring or offering a virtual Taunton High School Speed, Strength, and Conditioning Program that'll be kicking off on July 6th. So we're very proud of that program. And last but not least, we will be hosting or holding a Taunton High School Summer Theater Workshop. And again, that'll be held virtually, so that students can attend and participate in some theater programming during the summer. So with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral.
Receive and place on file.
Motion to receive and place on file, made and seconded.
Question?
On discussion, Mr. Souza.
Thank you, comment. Mr. Cabral, I just want to thank you for not only the athletic side, but the performing art side, and for having your staff and the administration and the leadership at the high school getting all, having something for different groups of students. So I commend the leadership team and the administration at the high school for that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. All set. Okay, roll call, please, Mrs. Fagan.
Yes. Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we will move on to E, Desi, initial fall reopening guidance. Mr. Cabral?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Jakes, would you mind sharing the screen, please? Thank you, Mr. Jakes. So last week, we received the initial guidance from the state regarding the fall reopening. I was going through the highlights of the reopen. Members of the leadership team, once I've gone through the initial guidance from the state, I'll have members of the leadership team provide you with updates on the seven different task forces that have taken on this challenging work. So the first goal, obviously, is to make sure that we can bring as many students back to in-person learning as possible. So that is what the driver, or what is driving the initial guidance we have received from the state. So the goal for the fall will be the safe return of as many students as possible to in-person learning settings to maximize the learning and to address our students' holistic needs. So I think we all agree that we had a successful remote learning plan, or a successful blended remote learning plan, but we all want to take the place of real in-person, or actual in-person learning. So the goal will be to bring as many students back, so that we can address all their needs in person in our classroom in a safe and healthy environment. We also want to make sure that our plan moving forward will provide a clear set of health and safety requirements for in-person learning in the fall that is grounded in the most up-to-date scientific literature and discussions with expert medical advisors. So it was nice to hear and learn that Dr. Fauci and his medical team, I believe cited the Massachusetts Plan or the medical guidance that we're receiving here in Massachusetts as a model for other states to follow. We have the best hospitals and the best and brightest medical officials, experts in the country, and in some cases, the world. So having that resource here in our back pocket, we believe will provide us with clear medical guidance or evidence-based guidance that will guide us in our plans to reopening or bringing people back, bringing students back in person. We also want to stress that things are fluid and things continue to remain fluid. So despite preparing for actual in-person learning, we want to reserve the right to remind everyone that we may need to alter our plans, whether it be some type of hybrid learning, which I'll talk a little bit more about later in this presentation, or should we have to resort to complete or full remote learning as we did for the past 13 weeks. So Desi is also going to require that we present the replans, as I stated. So we are going to present an in-person plan, a hybrid plan, and also a complete or a full remote learning plan. So we want to stress and emphasize that the medical community supports the return of our students in-person learning with the appropriate health and safety guardrails in place. We believe that with adherence to a comprehensive set of critical health and safety requirements, we can bring our students, staff, and families back to school safely. We also want to continue emphasizing that despite the nice weather and despite this, what it feels like a return to normalcy, we also want to continue to remind people that when we do return, we're going to continue emphasizing hand washing, we're going to continue to stress the use of wearing a mask or face coverings, continue following social distancing, and we want to reduce the interaction between groups. And we want to remind people when they're sick to stay home, that when you're sick and you stay home, not only are you caring for yourself, but you're also protecting those who are most vulnerable to the disease. We also want to be mindful and also remind the public that based on the data, based on the science that has been compiled and added to the Desi's guidance, that schools do not appear to have played a major role in the spread or transmission of COVID-19. We also want to state that in general, rates of COVID-19 infection are lower for children than they are for adults. Mr. Jakes, you can go back to the previous slide. Thank you, Steve. But we also want to say that if students are exposed, they are less likely to become infected with COVID-19. And if infected, it appears that children are less likely to infect others or be the super-spreeder that we first believed that they were. During a recent call with Desi, one of the questions that the team asked here in Taunton, was there's been a lot of discussion regarding long-term effects. If a student is exposed to COVID and does contract the virus, are there lingering the long-term effects that parents should be concerned by? So on the call with Desi, that question was answered by Dr. Fisher, resident for the Massachusetts chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics. And he stated, as of now, there is no medical data or any research that does indicate any long-term effects. And one of the reasons he noted was that students are not catching or... And one of the reasons he noted was that students are not catching or being exposed or contain catching the virus at a, at a rate. So therefore, if they're not catching the virus and not getting sick, there is, there is no data or does it appears there was no lingering effects from anyone catching the disease. So we wanted to, we want to continue to emphasize to our parents in the community that based on the latest medical research, it appears it indicates that students are safe to return if we adhere to the medical guidance of the medical experts. We're going to continue to stress masks and face coverings. So again, as the primary root transmission of COVID-19 is respiratory, masks and face coverings are among the most critical components to reduce the risks. We are going to require that students in grades two and above wear a face covering. We are going to ask that, we're going to encourage students in the lower grades and kindergarten and first, they should be wearing a face covering. But we also know that data suggests that students at a younger age are not as susceptible as prone to the disease. And we also know that at a younger age, it'd be harder to enforce that students wear the mask. But we are going to encourage that all students while attending, wear the mask, but we're going to, it's going to be required for grades two and higher. We're also going to ensure that adults, including educators and staff, wear masks or face coverings. And again, this is PPE, protective personal equipment that Mrs. Moynihan and her team have been working around the clock to procure with the school system. And we do realize that there will be exceptions for those, whether it's adults or students, to wear face coverings. If there are any underlying medical or any disabilities that we need to be aware of, that would make it difficult for the person or students to function or due to a mask. During our plan, when we build our plan, we will make sure that we build in mask breaks following the guidance released by Desi. We're also going to discuss a little bit, Mr. Jakes, the next slide, please. We also will adhere to the social distancing or the physical distancing guidelines that are being recommended. So as of now, there are two trains of thought or two schools of thought. The CDC, I believe, and the World Health Organization are recommending two different distances. So the CDC is recommending six-foot social distancing while the World Health Organization is recommending three feet. And right as of now, there is no precise threshold for safety. So we are going to adhere to a minimum of three feet when designing our classrooms. So when looking into our classrooms, there's been a lot of concern regarding desks and tables. So because of our push to utilize small group instruction, we have moved away from utilizing desks to utilizing more trapezoid tables. But we believe utilizing a combination of trapezoid tables and desks that will be able to maximize the space in our classroom to accommodate a large number of students. So our administrators and our custodians in our facility folks are working very hard to maximize the space in our classrooms. Utilizing the social distancing of three feet from seat to seat. So three feet from seat to seat, we believe will be able to accommodate a large number of students in our schools. We're also looking at the classroom and facility configuration. So we'll be asking our staff to remove any equipment or any furniture that is not necessary in the classroom in order to accommodate more students. We are going to ask our principals to trust, verify the head counts or the desk counts that we are getting from those who are performing the stress test. And we are also looking into utilizing alternative spaces. Alternative spaces would include our cafeteria, our libraries, our auditoriums, in some cases, even our courtyards or even outdoor learning spaces. Some school systems have even looked into utilizing parking spaces. So again, we will look at every nook and cranny to ensure that we can, one, bring as many students back in person and also utilize the appropriate social distancing of three feet and six feet with three feet being the minimum. The other challenge would be how we group our students. So at the middle schools, at the elementary school, that shouldn't be difficult because our students are grouped in one cohort and they stay with that teacher for the day. At the middle school, we've been doing some work over the last couple of years at our middle schools to prepare the students for the high school by having what I, what I call the amoeba schedule, where students don't travel with the same cohort. They actually go like the high school, they travel or move from class to class where they interact with different peers. So in order to spread the, to prevent the spread of the virus, we're going to ask our middle schools to group students in cohorts that will travel together or remain in a classroom together, should we move the staff member versus moving the students. So that'll be more challenging at the high school. So Mr. Matos and his team have already begun work there. But our elementary and middle schools, and also our middle schools will have to revert to the old way of scheduling students. We do want to say that the guidance right now is not requiring that we screen students and staff upon entering the schools. We're asking parents to play that role at home, that if a student or their child spikes a fever or their child is ill, that they keep the child home. Again, not only will it help the child recover quicker, it'll also protect the adults in our schools. Well, something new that our principals have begun working on and that we have discussed with our principals. And again, this guidance was covered from, from front page to the last page with our principals during a all admin meeting with our COVID leadership team. We are asking our principals to identify a second space in addition to the nursing office, nurses' office, where we can house students should they be sick until their parents are able to pick them up and remove them from the building. So principals have already begun working on that space and they will share or they identified space with Mrs. Moynihan as part of our remote or our return to not, our return to fall education plan. So again, the three plans that we will be designing will be, Mr. Jakes, you go to the next slide, please. Next slide, please. Thank, next slide, please. Sorry, I thought it was in, I thought it was on this. You can go back up two slides, but right there. Thank you, Mr. Jakes. So the three plans, again, you notice the green box, return without restriction. So I don't believe we are there yet. I think the hope is that at some point we will get there, if sooner than later. Say if the data suggests that we can return all without restrictions, then that would be the goal. But as of now, it appears it'll be first option, in-person learning with new safety requirements or a hybrid learning, which will be students learn both in-person and remotely or full remote learning, where learning takes place remotely. So those are the three plans that we will be designing and that the task force will be working on. We also do understand that there are certain populations that will require more time in, with in-person learning. So some of our special needs populations, possibly our English language learners may require more in-person learning, learning than some of our other student populations. I've already discussed the use of alternative spaces and the alternative use of faculty spaces. We've discussed how alternative to reducing class sizes and also how to reduce the mixing of students in our schools. So next week, so we do have a timeline. So from 7/6, which is next Monday, so beginning Monday, July 6th, we will launch our survey. Mrs. Perry and her operations team are finalizing the survey, which will go out on Monday and will run through Friday. Then the following week, we will, which I believe is 7/13, on Monday, July 13th, we will receive the data and begin analyzing the data. And we'll have a quick report out based on the feedback we receive from parents who are planning to utilize transportation. And also we want to inquire and identify parents who are planning to return students so that we can plan accordingly to ensure we have enough space in our buildings to accommodate all our students. Additional guidance that we will receive from Desi later this month or early August will be a fall reopening checklist. I will also be receiving guidance for a process on handling COVID-19 positive cases in our community. We'll be receiving additional remote learning resources. Desi is also working on providing us with a learning management system tool that they may be able to provide to all districts. We are currently working with our, our IT department to either develop our own learning management system in-house or utilizing free resources. We are all, we are also looking to utilize a resource that other school systems have utilized and vetted that would provide our students and our staff and our parents with a learning management system, which will house all our work, all our student work and teacher work. We will receive additional guidance regarding facilities and operations, transportation, food service, delivery model, and also guidance regarding athletics, extracurricular activities and activities. So those are just some of the additional work that we plan to receive from Desi moving forward. At this point, I think it would be appropriate for the leadership team or the key individuals leading our task forces to provide you with a key update or some updates on the work that they are doing with their task force. And I plan or the plan will be for us to release our, and our plan the week of July 20th, which will coincide with the second of the guidance that Desi plans to release later this month or early August. So with that, I'll turn things over to Mr. Barada, who will give you a quick update on education. I believe Mrs. Moore Rooney may, will also provide an update on her work regarding special education. And that'll be followed by transportation, a food service update, an update on the facilities, task force, the operations task force, health and safety and communication. So, Mr. Barada?
Do you want to come sit here?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to think that we have the most important of all the task force available to him about education, focusing on teaching and learning. Our group also happens to be the largest. We have 51 members of our group, represented parents, community members, including the Y, the Family Resource Center, teachers, curriculum coordinators, curriculum supervisors, principals, a school committee member, Mr. Palowski, along with representatives from the statewide system of support or Desi, Joe Petner. We've met twice so far, June 15th and June 24th, with the next meeting scheduled July 7th. It's important to note that we met, I guess you'd say, off sequence when Desi released our information. So we did a lot of research ahead of time, preparing for our really hard work, which is going to start taking place next week. Again, as Mr. Cabral mentioned about looking at the traditional model of in-person learning, remote learning or hybrid, those sort of our focus. With our task force focus is prepare the district and community for three possible scenarios by which our educators may be delivering the instructions starting August 31. With our first meeting objective was to begin the process of identifying, defining and supporting the successful implementation of hybrid teaching and learning from the students lens. Again, taken into account what it means to be a student in our classrooms. And part of that also, that research had to do with review of some pivotal articles. One was released by the Rennie Center, talking about reentry in the fall. Another, a white paper that was probably authored or published a few months ago, obviously, is called the Opportunity Myth, talking about equity gaps. And it dovetails nicely into how the pandemic exacerbated these gaps and what we need to do to address those gaps. And also, which was released just recently, the Desi guidance for the fall return. In addition to that, task force members participated in Desi's webinars specifically for the content areas of math, English language arts and science. And the focal point of those webinars was, what are we going to do in terms of our curriculum, most importantly, the standards as we return in the fall? As you remember, we transitioned from enrichment when we first closure to let's remediate what we've already taught to new standards. And they came out with those essential standards or bridge standards or power standards. And what was very clear with these webinars from Desi is, at this time anyways, they're not going to be identifying power standards. Their expectation is that we're going to actually accelerate learning, addressing grade level standards upon entry to school and then scaffolding those supports to bridge the gaps where students might have encountered gaps. Obviously, we're going to have to look at our assessment systems and we do have some in place, our map growth. We have DIBELS and other formative assessments, which will be able to gauge the summer regression or actually the March regression. And it will actually help us provide information as to what other interventions are we going to align with that standards-based instruction. So that pretty much encompasses our first two meetings. With the last meeting, we actually broke out, again, 51 members into workout sessions, actually beginning to look at, by grade stance, identifying student, teacher and parents must haves for the successful implementation of hybrid learning. Again, they were provided, our members were provided with all the student, teacher and parent surveys that the district administered probably around May 4th, which is also in our shared folder of all our resources. So again, we're looking forward to our third meeting next week, next Wednesday, 9:00 AM. Where we're actually going to get down to the nitty-gritty of what does a school day look like for a teacher, for a child, for a parent, whether they're in our school or the hybrid model, what does it look like, how does it look like? And obviously, coming right out of the gate of all work is going to be a conal in terms of grades and what does that mean? So thank you very much for this opportunity to share with you what our task force and education is dealing with.
Thank you, Mr. Barada. Next, you can stay there. I'll just turn it. Next, Mrs. Perry will provide a, provide you with a transportation update.
Good evening, everyone. The transportation task force is also comprised of looking at recommendations for transportation as well as recommendation, recommendations for athletics. Mark, Audubie and Ellie is heading up the transportation and athletics task force. I know that as of today, they have had, they have had several areas of focus such as student ridership, disinfecting procedures for all of our transportation vehicles, analyzing bus stops, bus routes and looking at those students that are designated walkers. In regards to athletics, I know that Mr. Audubie and Ellie is working very closely with the MIAA task force as they create their guidelines. The MIAA task force headed up by President Jeffrey Granatino is working with Governor Baker, the Massachusetts Department of Health, DPH, the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, DESI. Their website offers a variety of information, including opening up guidelines and sports considerations. As with our task, as with our operations task force, they will continue to receive guidance and will present upcoming recommendations and plans as they are received and completed. For more information, I suggest you visit www.miaa.net for the latest updates on the MIAA task force.
So Mrs. Moore Rooney will provide us with an update on health and safety.
Good evening. Nurse Reagan is not available this evening, so I'm going to give you a summary. The health reentry team has met via Zoom on several occasions. The team consists of a diverse group of individuals from the school department and other local agencies. Research was conducted to determine appropriate factual resources that could be used to help develop a safe reentry plan. Subgroups were created so members could focus on specific topics. The topics included our entry into building protocols, nurse office accessibility and meeting student needs, use of personal protective equipment for students, staff and nurses, procedures for students or staff with COVID-19 symptoms, siblings or household members who are ill, sick policy enforcement, flow charts for parents when to keep students home from school, social emotional support for staff and students and staff returning to work. On Thursday, June 25th, we received the initial fall reopening guidance from Commissioner O'Reilly. This information is guiding us in creating best practices for the safe return of students and staff. It also provides health safety requirements for in-person learning. Using this information, a working document was created and will be revised with each new update that is released. The team will continue until a finalized document is created.
Mrs. Perry will provide us with an update on operations.
The operations task force is planning for our third meeting tomorrow. We have approximately 25 members to our task force. Our members include teachers from pre-K through high school, administrators, parents, school committee members and members from several community organizations such as the YMCA, Girls and Boys Club, the Family Resource Center and Taunton Park and Recreation. As you know, operations is a very broad area of focus, so we have been working in subgroups including making recommendations for building our template for our return to school plan, parent communication survey, recommendations for remote learning options and also recommendations for building in classroom procedures, which include using our latest Desi guidance in regards to desk and student placement and after-school care, including support for parents. We've had a combination of Zoom and in-person meetings. Our next steps are as follows. I believe Mr. Cabral went through the timeline. We are working to create our template for a plan that works for Taunton Public Schools. Completing our parent survey and preparing to launch that survey the week of July 6th to July 10th, which is next week. Analyzing the data from the survey through July, July 13th through July 15th. Using that data to complete our return to school plan and then hopefully presenting our plan the week of July 24th. We will then be sending a second parent survey the last week of July to assess the needs after having the parents receive the present plan. parents receive the present plan. The Operations Task Force is a great group of committed people, and we look forward to presenting our recommendations for approval. Next, Mrs. Moynihan will provide you with a facilities update.
Thank you, Mrs. Perry.
Good evening, everyone. The Facilities Task Force has met two times already, and our next one one day. Our task force includes teachers, staff members, communities, community involvement as well from the Family Resource Center and Girls Club, Girls Inc., and also some school committee members. Our first meeting, what we really discussed were what will we think our schools will look like in the fall? And of course, our first meeting was before we received any type of direction from the Department of Ed. So we started talking about what are the immediate concerns of staff for students as well. Talked about masks, having hand sanitizers, disinfectant wipes in common areas, and some type of signage throughout the buildings, and that including the restrooms and in offices. What would the offices look like? What will our main office look like? Offices that would be visited quite often, like your guidance area, your guidance counselor and your secretary, common areas, bathrooms, copiers, teacher work rooms. And then we started talking about all different, what other concerns were. So discussing all of that, we really started some great conversations. And some of the conversations were, will we have enough Chromebooks for our K to twelve, not just our middle and high schools? Yes, we will, because of course, we just purchased some additional Chromebooks. Will there be Wi-Fi for all of our students if needed? PPE masks? Are they possibly like, teachers may not feel comfortable wearing the mask. Could they wear a shield, a face shield, especially for speech pathologist teachers? Then other ones would also ask is, one idea was, how about wearing a picture of, like nurses do, a picture of a teacher's face on them while we wear a mask, so the child can see the teacher smiling, because it is very difficult sometimes to see facial expressions while wearing a mask? And then we started to talk about what will our classrooms look like? And again, this was before DESI did send us some type of guidance. Would we be having lunch in our classrooms? How would we separate our trash bin? Would we have a trash bin for lunches and then get that out of the classroom? Would we have a disposal area just for PPE? And then, of course, working with the city, are we going to be starting to clean up our ventilation, putting filters? How often are we going to be cleaning our filters? So really, in this type of a facilities update, we have really had a lot of good conversations. And now we're going to start talking about in our next, in our next meeting is really putting our ideas for approval from the committees. And next, I would like to introduce Attorney Mitchell, who will give us an update on the food services and also communications.
Good afternoon, everyone. So two different task force that I've been a part of. Food Services Task Force is overseen by Karen Papa, our Director of Food Services. There's approximately ten people currently who are in our first meeting, and they involve principals at every grade level, although one of those was Dr. Moynihan. So we are going to be looking for another elementary principal to participate in that. Teachers, kindergarten teachers, all the way up to one of our culinary teachers in the high school, Mr. Matos was a part of it as well. And we are looking to add food service staff as well as some other teachers at some various grade levels to it. Mrs. Papa brought the group up to speed on what was done with food service previously during a remote learning and into the summer, and then talked about different meal scenarios that might determine which issues would arise under various concepts in the fall. She's waiting for direction both from the federal government as well as the state government about the reopening plan, and then from the federal food service agencies too, to give her some guidance about what she may or may not be able to do. The regulation she followed had been very relaxed when everyone became remote, and it's her hope that that will continue, which will help us with our food service planning.
I'll just send you a text.
So the group talked about how a parent survey would be very helpful as it moves forward. So they will be looking for that information from the parent survey coming out. They also talked about circumstances where many, many times, parents will come into the buildings to bring lunch to their children at lunchtime, and how that probably is going to need to change, and we'll need to communicate that out to the families, whether or not we're going to be allowing food celebrations, what are we going to do with snack times during the classroom, especially if à la carte options are not available, and how can we educate parents on food safety when packing a lunch for their children? Three different scenarios were discussed. They involve service in the cafeteria, service in the classroom at lunch, as well as service in the classroom at breakfast. And various pieces were raised at that meeting. Doing service in the cafeteria, we need to think about sanitation. That would be true in the classroom as well. We need to think about social distancing in line and at the tables, and how would that be set up? If we have to collect money from students, and we're hoping that that may be something that gets relaxed at the federal level, how are we going to go about doing that safely and get everyone through the lunch line in time to be able to eat and also clean up so that they can continue learning? We made it very clear that sharing foods and beverages between students has to be a rule that we have to be very strict about enforcing not occurring. There was conversation about being in the classroom. How are we going to be tracking participation of students and getting the meals? How are we going to be delivering the meals? What about trash and pest control? And how are we going to monitor the students and what they're eating, especially when you're dealing with situations of allergies? And if the students aren't going through the registers, how will we know, especially at the elementary level, if they're somehow eating something that they shouldn't be eating? We have, we do, you know, we talked about how at least at some schools, we do offer breakfast in the classroom options. We've had some experience with eating in the classroom, but we're not, we don't do that in all the buildings. And some of those buildings that we don't do it in, it may be a little trickier as well. The Food Service Task Force is meeting next on July ninth at nine-thirty. And so now that the DESI guidance has come out since that time, they'll certainly be taking a look at that, too. I'm also on the Communications and Family Outreach Task Force. That task force I oversee, and there's approximately fifteen people who are a part of that task force. That consists of school committee members, teachers, guidance counselors, school psychologists, principals. We have the parent who is the principal or the president of the CPAC, who is a part of this, as well as people from the Family Resource Center. As I had mentioned previously, this task force is a little unique from the other ones, because many of our members partner with the other task forces so that we can bring back all the information that we're hearing and talk about what communication, if any, needs to occur. And so from that perspective, we started with just an update from the members who had attended other task force meetings. And then from there, we started talking about communications in general and how that had gone during the period of remote learning. We received a lot of really good feedback from the parents, as well as the community members who had been hearing from parents. And then we had some really great discussion with our teachers, too. So, you know, there was a general consensus that the communication was almost too much. They were hearing a lot from a lot of people, and sometimes that seemed a little overwhelming. So we talked about making sure that when we go forward, how can we better streamline our communication platforms? Ms. Blinow, who was a part of our Communication Task Force, was able to let us know that there's, you know, some things in the works already in Taunton that will provide us with better platforms to streamline our communications with our parents and our community members. And so that was nice to hear, and that's something we'll definitely be taking a look at. We also talked about how do we work with families that don't have access to technology? The teachers were very helpful in explaining that they believe that through cell phone use, we usually are able to get a communication to just about every family member. However, we are going to be looking at which families did we seem to lose touch with as the remote learning period went on, and trying to see why that might have been that we lost touch with those families. We also talked about how calling people seemed to be the best way to reach them when nothing else was working. So the best luck, I think one of our teachers said, is picking up the phone and calling them. And so that's something important to keep in mind as we move forward. So at this time, I had mentioned to the community, the Communication and Family Outreach Task Force, that there was going to be a parent survey that we were putting together, and that I would be sharing that with them. So when that draft survey was prepared, I did send it out to the members of the task force. And I have gotten some great feedback, which I've been able to share with the Operations Task Force as they finalize the parent survey. So we are meeting again on July fourteenth. We had purposefully waited to meet a second time, because we know there are so many other task forces that are meeting right now, and we needed some more information from them before we could really come together and start pushing forward with our communications. But it is the goal of every person who partners with another task force from our task force, that they're doing so and that they're contributing with the emphasis being thinking about what family communication needs, need to be discussed at each of those other task force meetings.
Thank you, Attorney Mitchell. Thank you, Mr. Barata, for handling logistics. So that concludes the presentation, and I'll do my best to answer any questions that may come up. If not, I may ask the team to just sit in front of my laptop, or just to speak real loudly to address the question, and I'll turn my computer to face the individual.
Okay, on discussion, this is Almeda, and then this is Thordi.
Thank you, Madam Mia. Okay, so how many students? When you said it's not going to be a problem to put students in the classroom, you can have a large number of students. How many students are going to be able to fit in a classroom?
So again, we're in the process of completing the stress test. We have not received all the information from our principals yet. But one classroom that we did a model here at E-Pole, we were able to accommodate about eighteen to twenty-two students. Actually, we were able to accommodate twenty-four students here at E-Pole. And this is one of our newer schools, and I believe the class sizes here at E-Pole are approximately a thousand square feet, maybe a little larger, because it's one of our newer schools.
So they'd be able to fit eighteen students?
Twenty-four.
Okay, because...
And that was using a combination of trapezoid tables and student desks.
Wow. Okay, because I thought all the new schools that we were building were nine hundred square feet. I don't know if I'm losing something in there. What about Mulcahy? How big is Mulcahy?
Yeah, I'm not, I don't know the actual square footage off the top of my head, but I would say it's probably close to a thousand square feet. I believe the kindergarten classrooms are a little larger, and the classrooms are a little larger. So that's why I keep using that thousand square feet as an average, Mrs. Almeda.
Okay, because I went on to the website to find out what an average class size was. And I was told that from my readings and what I found, it was nine hundred square feet. And they're saying if you have students that could be three feet apart, you had twenty students in a classroom, you needed one thousand twenty-nine square feet to have twenty students in a classroom. So they were saying that the average classroom would be over a hundred and twenty-nine square feet. So I'm kind of surprised to see that our class sizes are a little bit larger than what they say that they're supposed to be.
It's a combination, it's a combination of two things, Mrs. Almeda. It's one, we love newer schools for the most part, except for Galligan, Bennett and Letty. The rest of our schools will all be relatively new. And I say new, roughly about twenty years old or younger. So it's also the configuration, you know, the different configurations that we're utilizing and removing excess furniture, taking away some of those learning spaces in our classrooms in order to accommodate more desks and more trapezoid tables. So we believe that we can accommodate north of twenty here in some of our newer schools. The challenge, I think, will be the high school, where high school classes run different sizes from house to house. That'll be a challenge. In our smaller schools that don't have the excess space of the extra classrooms, because right now at Galligan, every classroom is being utilized, and in some cases, they've taken over unconventional space and turned that into classrooms.
Okay, so when we built these new schools, we built them larger than what was recommended? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, I would think, I think it goes back to the old formula that MSBA uses. So the formula that MSBA uses, they base it, I believe, on twenty-four students for one through four. And for pre-K and K, I believe they base it on twenty students. So I think, I think that's what it comes down to, is the actual class sizes that the MSBA formula uses versus what we actually put in our classroom. Because I think when, this was a discussion, I think maybe when we first, this was something discussed in one of our Dorian Ridda presentations, where the building occupational capacity, seven-thirty, we can actually accommodate over eight hundred students in that building, just because of the sheer size and scope. But the formula that MSBA uses is one thing versus the actual class sizes, the number of students we put in, we can actually accommodate more students than the MSBA formula. So it's not that we're building our schools larger than the average, it's the configurations that we're able to utilize.
Okay, so that's one question. And then, and then, I forget the doctor's name that you said was speaking, and they don't find any...
Lingering effect? It was Dr. Fisher, who answered that.
Okay, because now they're finding, people who have had the COVID, they're finding that they're now developing a lot of lung problems and blood quats and shortness of breath, and this is months after that they've recovered from the COVID. So there's a lot of after effects from the COVID. And the thing that concerns me is, you know, kids are people, too. So they're going to have the same kinds of symptoms that we're going to have eventually.
Yeah, so that was exactly the question that I raised during our forum. So again, I think it's important to state that the science shows that the younger, young children develop very mild symptoms. So as a result, they don't suffer as long, or they don't have the virus as long as an adult would. And because they're having very mild symptoms and they recover quicker, they're not seeing the lingering effects that you have noticed. So that was part of my concern, because I heard the same thing, and I wanted that question addressed. And that's how it was addressed. The students, kids get a very mild form, and they don't get it for as long. I think what the science that you're referencing or the researcher you're referencing, I believe, is in adults or in older people who develop the virus or catch the virus.
Yeah, well, these are people that were under forty, actually. So that's what I was trying to look, because they didn't have a lot of data on children. There have been some children who have died from the COVID.
And then the other...
Some children who do get the COVID. So I was kind of like looking to see what we were going to do. But, you know, and I'm just going to make one more comment, and then I'm going to yield to my colleagues. But we waited so long for guidance from DESI, and that is the worst piece of information I have ever seen in my life. They gave us absolutely no guidance whatsoever. And then they say, okay, here it is. They come out with a report on June twenty-fifth, and they want three scenarios from every school department in the state of Massachusetts by August. And they gave us no guidance. And they still haven't given us guidance on transportation. I just don't understand it. I think that, my personal opinion is, forget what DESI wants, make a plan for Taunton, submit it, let them say yea or nay, and don't go by any of their guidelines. And we should, our guidelines should be stricter than theirs, because they're our kids, not theirs. Thank you.
So if I could respond quickly, I would say this, the leadership team, we were happy to receive the guidance that we did receive from DESI. We feel that will help us drive our work, especially knowing how, what the regulation, what the rules will be as far as how many students we can fit to a classroom. That's really going to drive our work and drive our plan. So the overall, what we are being, what we are being told, and this will answer part of your question, Mrs. Almeda, the medical guidance is going to be mandated. We're going to be expected to follow. The rest of the recommendations in the plan and the later guidance that we receive later in July will be items that we will be able to decide locally. So...
I don't see what the difference was, Mr. Cabral. We always knew it was going to be six feet apart. The only thing they did, they changed it to three feet apart. We always knew they had to wear masks. We always knew we need to keep sanitizers. We have to remind the students to wash their hands. We always knew that the kids had a face forward, not sideways or anything else. Those were all the things that came with that report. So we could have been working on, what I'm seeing is, kind of tied our... So we could have been working on, what I'm saying is, kind of tied our hands for so long, that's all. I don't know. This COVID thing has gotten crazy. Thank you.
I would, I would also say our hands have been tied with other issues that have taken us away from this work. I think we can all say that the, the work that we've done around budget has consumed a lot of my team's time, which has impacted their ability. To meet with the task forces. So we started this work back on May twenty-seventh. So we've been at it for over a month and we know there's much more work to be done. So again, I think what's challenging for urban districts is that we have a lot of, I don't want to use the word issues. But we have a lot of work that needs to be done in addition to planning for the start of the school year. And again, not knowing our budget and knowing how much work has been consumed our budget. There've been some personnel matters that have taken us away from our work. So again, I'm, I'm happy where we are now. I don't think we're done. I know there's a lot more for us to do, but we'll be ready come June twenty to release our plan around the guidelines that the state has sent us. And it, and it will be tailor-made to meet the needs of, to meet the needs of time.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. Mrs. Doherty?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a comment. You mentioned at the beginning of your report, a survey, Mrs. Perry mentioned a survey, Mrs. Mitchell mentioned a survey. Is it a single survey or multiple surveys that focus on different issues?
It'll be one survey, the primary information we're looking to capture will be transportation. Parent, will parents be transporting their own students to school or will they be utilizing our transportation? Because that'll help us to identify or help us to plan for transporting. And obviously, if school were to start today, we're looking to gather or get an idea of how many parents would be sending their children to school. So there was a, there was a plan released yesterday, or I believe, I believe yesterday, there was a plan released from one of the districts outside of Boston. And I believe that plan identified sixty-six percent of the population would be returning to school. It's different, it's a more of a, it's more, more of a suburban community, not an urban community. So I would think in an urban community, we will see a greater response as far as parents returning their children to our schools.
Yes, would it be possible for you to share the completed survey with the school committee? And not the results, but before it goes out, just so we can see the questions. I know some of the committees have given input, some of the task forces have given input to that survey, perhaps others have not, have not seen the survey. Just FYI, so request. I, Mr. Bar, I didn't hear unless I missed it. Any mention of addressing the social emotional needs of the children. We, a lot of conversation out there in the ether, not necessarily here in Taunton. Talk about the impact of being isolated and remote and the, the impact on the children's mental wellbeing. Where does that fall? Does it fall under Mr. Barata's bailiwick, under Mrs. Mulrooney? Where does that?
Yeah, that, well, that falls under all of our umbrellas. So I initiated, I began having my individual meetings again with principals. And that was the first question that I asked principals, is to begin planning, giving some thought. To how we're going to re-enter the first few weeks of school, the first month of school. I want a heavy emphasis on assessing our students and where they are socially emotionally. I also want to place an emphasis on working with our students to help them process and digest all the work that's been, all the. All the work that's been going, all the, all the work around social justice that's been taking place or what's been going on in the news with us. To help them process and give them a platform to, you know, to discuss. So social justice, social emotional learning is going to play a key role in our entry when we come back. Just because our students have been away for so long and they haven't had the opportunities to talk or have those healthy, meaningful conversations with caring adults.
So you, thank you, Madam Mayor, just real quick, you, I know, I know. I think you said that the report, final reports would be due August or whenever they're due. It'll come, I'm assuming that that report will come to the school committee for the school committee's reaction and response to the content. And if we feel that other thing, and many things will happen between now and then, I'm sure. As you say, it's a movable feast, we'll have an opportunity to give input to our thinking. Apart from our participation in these task force meetings.
Correct. On May, on the May twenty-seventh memo, when we discussed this about when we initiated task force. I did remind all, each group that they are charged with developing recommendations and guidelines that I will approve along with the school committee.
And lastly, I hear Mrs. Almeida's frustration, which probably reflects the frustration of all of us everywhere across the country. Who serve in the decision-making positions about the Department of Education. We're guided by the CDC who guides the Department of Health, who guides our Board of Health, who guides the way in which we respond with our plan. So a lot of that's out of our control and we only have the information that we are given in order to make the kinds of decisions that we need to make. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Mr. Souza?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Cabral, I just have a quick question on the guideline, I shouldn't say guidelines. The next round of information coming from the, from Desi. Well, that, would we consider that to be guidelines? Would we consider that to be mandates? Do we know, have a feel for what they're going to say? So what you're saying is the health, the health and wellness is mandates, but the, this document here that we have is guidelines. How, what's your feel from the other superintendents and from what you're hearing?
Actually, Mr. Souza, that was a question that I texted Commissioner Riley over the weekend. So one of my questions to Commissioner Riley was, will the state be manned? Whether it's days on at a time and days off at a time, or a week on and a week off. So Commissioner Riley did ask, or did say that he would be giving us more information around, around what the schedule for students will look like. So we should be receiving that shortly and that's something I continued, in addition to trying to find out more information about chapter seventy. Those are questions that I continue to ask the commissioner or seek updates on so that we can plan accordingly. So again, we're going to, we're going to plan for all three options. We'll, we'll be prepared.
Yeah, that, that's exactly where I was headed with that question too. Is because I think at the, you know, in two weeks, they're going to throw you a curve ball and then you're going to, things are going to harden up quick of what you really have to do.
Yeah, as I get old, I'm getting better at hitting curveballs.
Exactly, Mr. Cabral. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Mr. Plasky, did you have your, Mr. Plasky?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to Mr. Cabral. Thank you to you and your team for all the information. I think with all the work that we've been doing, there's, there's a lot to consider. I, I think we're going to have to put most of our effort into some sort of a hybrid plan. Because I just can't see how there's any possibility of having a hundred percent of our students back in school safely. So when we have to consider not only the safety of our students, but also the social emotional learning. It just, all, all the, all the information that I've heard, all the aspects that I've seen, including my, my time spent on the educational task force. We're going to need to come up with some sort of hybrid solution that would include a very robust remote learning platform. Because we're going to need that no matter what happens. Because if we even get kids back into school, if the worst happens and somebody tests positive and we need to revert back to remote learning. We're going to need to make sure that that is strong. So like, I, I know that that's something that we're considering in the, the educational task force. And I know that you've given me a little bit of your insight in personal conversations. Could you maybe talk about some of the plans that you have for responding to the survey that went out? Improve, improving our remote learning plan for the fall?
Yes, so, so one of the things, well, obviously, the work that you did a couple of meetings ago. Authorizing the use of the KS fund to make a large technology purchase. You know, plays well into what we are planning for the fall as far as multiplying. So every staff member, we are planning to provide every teacher with a laptop. So should we have to go remote or have to go some form of blended or hybrid learning? Every staff member will have a laptop. We've ordered additional Chromebooks to ensure that we can go one-to-one with all our students. Again, should we have to go hybrid or whether or not we're in person? So what we're planning, or the way I'm looking at this, is that we see the use of the Chromebook, whether it's in-person or hybrid, being part of the new norm. And I can see us, what we've learned during this time is, we're becoming less and less reliant on actual paper. That we can accommodate or actually do teaching and learning through a Chromebook by posting worksheets on our Chromebook using different platforms. Which brings me to the platform question. So Mr. Barata and I and Mrs. Blano, our IT director, we sat in on an hour and a half long conversation with Lynn Public Schools. To learn about their learning management system. So their learning management system has been vetted already, they've gone through a very robust process and they shared all that information with us. Mrs. Blano, working with her IT directors, they feel we can create our own learning management system. Which about forty percent of our staff, she believes, are already comfortable with. So that's what we're weighing right now, is do we continue down the path with a, with a learning management system? That our teachers are somewhat familiar with? Or do we entertain purchasing something out of the box and then having to train all our staff over again? So those are things that we're, we're discussing in-house. And when I say learning management system, a learning management system is not an actual out-of-the-box curriculum. It's a platform where a teacher can create a worksheet and load the worksheet or load all their assignments for the week. It provides the ability for parents to communicate with their, with their teacher or the student to communicate with their child. Teachers to post comments on how a student is performing. So a learning management system, think of it as a blank canvas where the teacher can embed or place all the teaching and learning that's going to take place. Any of you who have taken courses at the college level, it's like a college of Blackboard. But geared towards elementary, middle school and high school students, not the college level. The good thing about it is that it will prepare our students for life in college. Because our students, I think, have a disadvantage when they get to college, never having, taking a course using something like Blackboard. That's something that they need to learn all over again when they become freshmen. Sorry to go on and on. I hope that answers your question.
No, that's, that's good. Thank you. I, I think it's very important that we, we are forward-thinking about this. And I appreciate the perspective of connecting it to college. Plans have to really be district-wide in our thoughts. We have to think about pre-K to twelve and transitioning into college. So I'm glad that your team is putting that much thought into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plasky. All right, seeing no one else, oh, Mr. Fiore.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of questions have come to mind as I've been listening to the dialogue. First of all, if we're going to be looking prospectively at. Continuing some form of remote learning, how are we going to deal with the issues of parents being out of work and wanting to get back? Are we looking at any care alternatives? And secondly, I do get some questions also about. Care for, for teachers, particularly some of those who may be in more vulnerable risk groups. And I want to know what planning is being done on those two fronts.
Well, I'll answer the first part regarding daycare services. So that's always something that we discuss and we plan for, whether it be before school or after school or during school daycare. Say if a parent does not want their child or the child cannot attend in person, but has to keep the child home and the parent has to go to work. That would be, I believe, very challenging for the school department to be able to provide that type of a service. But that may be something that we can partner with one of our community organizations, which Mrs. Perry has been working with throughout the summer. There may be an opportunity to partner with one of those agencies or organizations, provide daycare. While also maybe even providing, you know, access to our remote learning, should, our hybrid learning, should that be the case. The second part regarding our staff, that's something that we discuss almost daily with our leadership team. Because we know, I know firsthand that there are staff members with underlying medical conditions that will not be able to return. And nobody, we want them to return if they're going to be placed at risk. So that is something that the Health and Wellness Task Force will be addressing and that's something I plan. I anticipate we'll be discussing with our union when we impact bargaining with the fall outlook.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mrs. Doherty?
Thank you. A quick question to you, Mr. Cabral. I, is it safe to assume that in the final report that you will be giving to us regarding reopening? That the staffing levels will be included in each of those recommendations? Number of nurses, number of custodians to clean up the place, number of classroom teachers, so forth and so on. Is that your plan to include the staffing levels?
Well, we're, right now, we're planning to have teachers in the classroom. But if that's something that the committee wanted us to spend some time on, in addition to all this, in addition to compiling our plan. That's something that we could provide as we get closer to the school year. But right now, we're, we're planning one adult in every classroom and one adult in front of every student. If we need to break out and utilize a hybrid or maker space, so to speak. In order to keep the class sizes low or keep the class sizes to the point where we can safely place students three feet apart in every room. But yes, the goal will be to have one student, sorry, one teacher, certified teacher with every student. You know, we can provide you with that breakdown at a later point.
All set, okay. All right, anyone else? Okay, seeing nothing. Do you guys need to vote to place out a file or anything like that or no? Okay. All right, so we can move on to administrative business?
I don't see any, no staffing report.
Okay. All righty, subcommittee reports. Finance and Law Subcommittee, Mr. Martin?
Finance and Law Subcommittee made earlier this afternoon with myself, Mr. Fiore and Mr. Souza. Also in attendance were Superintendent Cabral and Ms. Monahan, Assistant Superintendent. Item on the agenda, which appears every week and since school has been out, there hasn't been any student activity requests. So that's the first item, there weren't any. Second item was bills payable in the amount of two hundred eighty-five thousand, three hundred twelve dollars and ninety-two cents. Which was approved by the Subcommittee. And finally, Ms. Monahan gave us a quick facilities update, which Mr. Cabral has pretty much addressed. It dealt with the summer programs that were going on and the fact that the PPE has been ordered. And hopefully will be available for both students and staff as the, the summer progresses. And that was pretty much the. What happened at Finance and Law this evening.
Motion to accept the report and adopt the recommendations of the Subcommittee.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mayor. Through you to the Ms. Monahan and Mr. Cabral. On page two, the College Board Guidance Supplies and Materials, twenty-nine, five, twenty-five, what does that represent?
That represents the payment for our AP exams taken by the high school students.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you clearly.
Represents the, the, the fees for our high school students to take the AP exams.
The AP exams, okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Mrs. Doherty, did you have something?
Yes, I do. Two things. One is in relation to outside placements. So I guess the question is, are students who are in outside placements continue to participate in those many locations? During this period of time of COVID nineteen?
Yep.
So they continue to participate?
I'm sorry, I was looking at Mrs. Mulrooney for.
I saw you doing something, right?
I just want her to confirm what I believe is correct. So yes, the students attending collaboratives such as South Coast or Reed's, they are participating or attending remotely.
Still, oh, remotely. Thank you very much. And the second question is, when do we get the report that balances the budget? When does that?
Yeah, as soon as, yeah, I'm, you're a good, great question, because I asked Mrs. Monahan that question today. When can we, when can we expect the closeout report? So it's, usually we don't have the final numbers until we've completed our encumbrance list. And I believe the city said we can close in August. Yeah, we will be able to close, continue paying warrants into August. So we should have that final report sometime in August.
So you, you may remember, I'm sure you do, that a member of the city council had asked for that report. In relation to the use of the resources that may be left over and unused from school closing. If there are any. Do you remember? I think it was Debbie Carr who asked for that information.
Yeah, and as I've, as I've stated a few times, and I think I even discussed this in a meeting. Will we, I don't, whatever resources are left over will be spent for next year. If there are any resources left over, because again, we want to maximize our revenue, such as in our revolving accounts. And the other, any other revenue, we want to maximize that and be able to carry it forward to utilize any deficits in our budget.
So we'll learn all of that when you come to us with the balanced budget. Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Mr. Souza, did you have something?
I don't want to belabor the point because we're starting to get off the track here of what's germane to this motion. But I will say, I've had this discussion with the superintendent. No report is going to go to the city council unless it comes to us first for review. So anything that he's going to document will come to us and then he will forward it to him, excuse me, to them. So I just wanted to let everyone know that. I think it's very important that we see any of that information first. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. So the motion on the floor is for the Finance and Law Subcommittee report. You're welcome. So the motion on the floor is for the Finance and Law Subcommittee Report. It was seconded. Mrs. Fagan, if we could have a roll call vote?
Yes. Let me see.
You.
You.
Oh, Mrs. Fagan, you're on mute.
I'm sorry, I thought I was unmuted. Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Pulowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Mr. Fiore, if we could have a brief summary of the Rules Committee?
All right. I didn't know if we wanted to wait until next time, because it's not actually on the agenda, but I can do it very simply.
It's on the agenda.
All right. I didn't get the updated agenda.
Oh, sorry. Just brief.
Yeah, all right, that's fine. The Rules Committee met this evening with myself, Mr. Souza, and Ms. Doherty and Superintendent Cabral. We had before us consideration of change of title of Headmaster at Taunton High School, and the committee voted two to one to retain the present title, Ms. Doherty voting in opposition. And that's the report.
Thank you.
Accept the report and adopt the recommendations of the Subcommittee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on discussion, Mr. Pulowski, and then Mrs. Almeida.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to my colleagues on the Rules Committee. It's into the meeting. So I'm going to convey to you all something I've heard from my parents quite a lot growing up. I'm not mad, but I'm disappointed. We've had to make a lot of really hard decisions on this committee. I mean, I've only been here this year, and we've had to make a lot. This wasn't a hard decision, and I'm really kind of surprised that it went this way. I've always kind of found the title of Headmaster confusing at best. But it's definitely offensive. I thought that was an easy decision to make, to change that. The principals of our school are the leaders of our school, and leaders are somebody that you choose to follow because they set a good example. When you hear the word "master," that conveys a tone of following because you have no choice. And I certainly don't think that that's what we want at our high school. I've got two kids at the high school. That's not what I want the name of their leader to be. So, you know, I learned in Mrs. Chadwick's class in ninth grade when we read Romeo and Juliet, that a rose by any other name would smell as sweet. And since Principal Mattos even said that he was cool with changing the name from Headmaster to Principal, I can't imagine that the Assistant Principal nor the Associate Principal would have a problem with that name change either. So I really don't see why we would. So, you know, maybe it's not the biggest deal in the world, but I thought that was something easy. So I don't agree with it, so I don't know what I can do about it. But I'd certainly like to bring this up again, and I don't want this to be the end of it. So thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, Mr. Pulowski. Mrs. Almeida, Mrs. Doherty, and then Mr. Souza.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to share with you what I shared with Mr. Cabral. First of all, I did not feel that position is not a rule. It's not the rule of the Taunton School Committee. Okay? That should have been referred to the High School Subcommittee. And secondly, because all the administrators are on individual contracts, it doesn't matter what you call them. You can call them a finitso pin if you want. You want to call them a principal versus a headmaster, and they agree to it. They're on an individual contract, so therefore they can become a principal. It is the people under him that belong to a bargaining unit. That has to be bargained. So I have a problem with the Rules Subcommittee even addressing that issue. It should have gone to High School. But secondly, I think that now if that was their recommendation, we can either vote that up or down. Because if the majority of the committee decides that they want to have principal instead of headmaster, we can bring that to the table tonight. And if not, when this motion is over from this report, I would like it to be referred to High School for us to be able to discuss it or allow the Superintendent to speak with the headmaster and see his choices of what it is. And I'm sure he's already agreed that's principal. And we just need to refer to Unit B for the associates and the assistant headmaster, so they can negotiate those titles. Thank you.
You're welcome. You can, Mrs. Doherty, and Mrs. Doherty.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Mayor. My objection, as a member of the Rules Subcommittee, turned on both what Mr. Pulowski and Mrs. Almeida has said in regard to who gets to say whether or not they want the job title to be changed. So it just seems to me that Mr. Mattos has agreed that a principal is a fine title, that persons who hold the other titles don't disagree, then there seems to be no objection. If the union, because the union represents the associate headmasters. So the title, their job description and the title would need to, once the school committee adopts, if it does someday, we would need to negotiate either before or after in terms of the title. If most districts hold the title of principal, and some, particularly Boston Latin, I think, and those academies in Boston hold the title of headmaster. And if the term, particularly if the term offends anyone, you know, an injury to one is an injury to all, and it doesn't change the nature of the work. It simply means that the title that was given as headmaster 150 years ago, in Mr. Fiore's words, it's a long time away. We need to think about moving forward in this regard and seriously considering the change. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Mr. Souza and then Mr. Fiore.
Yeah, I'm going to yield in a minute to Mr. Fiore. He has a lengthy background on this, and I thought it was a very poignant discussion as far as the background information. And, you know, we can sit here all night and talk about what's offensive to one person and what's not offensive to someone else. But the bottom line is, we have a history of this naming position and its other high schools that have the same thing. And I don't think that it's, you know, off the norm to leave it. It has, the history goes way back, and I'm not going to sit here and try to change history. And I don't think it's that big of a deal. I don't think it's... You know, anyone can interpret any word they want, the way they want to. So to me, leaving it is not... I'm going to yield to Mr. Fiore, so he can give a little historical background on it, or say his piece on it.
Thank you. Mr. Fiore?
Oh, thank you. First of all, let me say that black lives very definitely matter to me. But first of all, there are many aspects and many definitions to the word "master." We'd have to create an upheaval of the entire English language if we're going to be offended at every single use of it, which has nothing to do with the badges and incidents of slavery. And second of all, in the field of education, there is a proud tradition of the word of headmaster. It has nothing to do with the relationship of slaves or servants. It has to do with somebody who's in command. You may remember a few years ago, there was a very popular movie out called Master and Commander, the military titles. And most of the administration and half the member of the school committee have a degree with that word in it. We're going to have to change all of "academe" if we're going to take offense at that word. There are just too many aspects of it, and there are too many proud things about headmaster. I certainly don't want to offend anybody. And as I said, I'm no more racist than anybody else, let's put it that way. We've decided now that we're all racist to some degree. But I'm not a particularly hostile one, but I just don't think that that is a matter of sensitivity with this particular use of the word. I mean, there are a lot of other words that are loaded with things, too. I got into trouble last year because I referred to somebody being violently opposed to something. Being violently opposed doesn't mean you commit violence. It means you're very strong in your feeling. People are going to take offense or read things into words, whatever they want to read. Again, my idea was the tradition in education and not anything with regard to masters and slaves.
Thank you, Mr. Fiore. Mrs. Fagan?
Thank you, Mr. Fiore. I certainly appreciate what you had to say. I'm really just concerned about how everybody takes everything out of context now. I always thought, I had six children graduate from Taunton High School, and I always looked at that as a title of a leader. I didn't look at it any other way. I suppose we can nitpick about everything, and everybody's going to be offended by something. And I just don't want to be tiptoeing around all the time, watching people want to take things out of context, because I think in many ways, that just becomes a destructive process. I didn't have a headmaster at where I went to high school, at Somerset High, and they came here, and I thought, wow, that's, I like that word. And it goes back to long traditions, even in Dickens' A Christmas Carol, when he was left at school with the headmaster, when Scrooge was left there, you know, when his father didn't come to get him. And there is a long history of it, but I think we focus on certain things, then we just want to eliminate words. I think if we keep on at this pace, we might as well just all walk around with duct tape on our mouths, because as soon as we say any word, somebody's going to find it offensive. I often find when I watch things on TV, I'm going, jeez, I never would have taken it to that length. But there seems to be this ongoing thing. I just wish we could come to a place where we could all just sit and have a rational conversation and not get all hepped up about words, because we can pick everything apart. I didn't expect we were going to be voting on this tonight. It's something I want to give more thought to. I just kind of back off this for right now. I think we have much bigger fish to fry, so to speak. I hope I didn't offend the fish. But we have to get kids back into school, and that's the most important thing to me right now. I went by Mulcahy School the other day. I don't know if any of you have been by there. And you can see right through the gym, they're already taking it down. And I feel bad about that. I had five of my sons graduated from there, and my sixth one did one year there. And all of a sudden, I felt bad. As beautiful as that new building is, you know, some things have to change. We have to modernize. But there's some things, I think, that should be somewhat sacred. And I think sometimes we're losing track of that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. So there's a motion on the floor to accept the Subcommittee Report, and it has been seconded. Are we ready to vote?
Now, the motion is to accept the report and adopt the recommendation.
Oh, thank you for the clarification. So there's a motion made and seconded. If we could have our roll call vote, Mrs. Fagan?
Yes. Ms. Doherty?
No.
Mr. Pulowski?
No.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin? I'm sorry. You're muted.
No.
Mrs. Almeida? Mrs. Almeida?
No.
I'm lost now. Mr. DeMello?
No.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Want to refer this issue to the High School Subcommittee, please?
Second.
Just a minute. The motion did not pass. It was a five-three. Okay. So motion made and seconded.
I want to refer the motion to the High School Subcommittee regarding the headmaster. And we'd like to have that meeting, what's today, Wednesday, no later than Monday. And refer the associates and the assistant headmaster to the appropriate bargaining team.
Just a point of information.
Second.
Mr. Cabral?
Sorry, City Hall is closed tomorrow, so we won't be able to get the posting.
I mean...
It's closed on Friday, so we...
We're only here half-day tomorrow.
Half-day tomorrow? So does that give you enough time for the posting? I don't think there's enough time for the posting, Mrs. Almeida.
That'll be 48 hours, Mr.
Can't count holidays.
Now and Monday. The holiday's on Saturday.
Well, we're celebrating it or recognizing it on Friday, so City Hall is not open, so I'm not sure.
State holiday, the state is recognizing it on Friday.
Okay, so Tuesday.
Tuesday.
I'll second that.
Point of information?
Discussion.
Doherty, then Mr. DeMello, then Mr. Souza.
Is the assistant headmaster in the union? No. He's a non-aligned employee, so...
Okay.
Yeah, so it would just be the associates. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mayor. Would it be more appropriate to just come to the committee, the whole, instead of going back to a Subcommittee of High School?
No.
No? Someone's shaking their head. Yes. Is it possible or no?
I mean, you got the votes to do it right now. If you want to do it right now, you can do it.
Okay, I'll make a motion, and I will withdraw my motion and make a motion to change names from headmaster to principal of Taunton High School.
Second.
Okay, so motion made and seconded.
If the maker of the motion is going to do the principal, then please include the assistant headmaster and the associates as well.
That's exactly what I meant. Thank you.
All right, we're clear on the motion? Motion made and seconded on a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Fagan?
Mrs. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Pulowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
No.
Mrs. Fagan votes no. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
No.
The vote is five to three. The motion passes. All right, moving on to new business. Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, through you to you. When the City Council voted on the city budget last night of 200 and almost $39 million, it was an education line of $92,403. When it says "education," that's not just us Taunton Public School District, correct?
I don't have it in front of me, but I believe that is correct, that it most likely includes the assessments from like BP and Bristol Aggie.
Okay.
But I would want to confirm that.
Okay, that's what I was also imagining.
You're correct, Madam Mayor. You're correct.
That's correct. Okay. Thank you so much. That answers my question. Thank you.
Any other new business? Seeing none. Unfinished business. Well, number one is EF Tours letter.
Mr. DeMello asked me to put this on the agenda, and I had no problem. And I don't know, Mr. DeMello, would you like to speak on the proposed letter?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. To my colleagues, I've drafted a letter that's in the packet today, and I immediately saw two spelling mistakes on the Mrs. Kate Bersef, and it's spelt incorrectly twice, so I apologize for that. But basically, the context of the letter is to once again request through EF Tours in a formal manner, with the support of my colleagues, to have them reevaluate their position and refund 100% in full to students and travelers at the Taunton Public Schools. The reason behind this is, a couple of weeks ago, in the Taunton Daily Gazette was a piece that I had sent back in May that the Taunton Gazette published in June regarding my reasoning of why they should be refunded as a travel professional. I did have a disclosure that I am a school committee member and sit in a position of travel at the university, but had a multitude of reasons why they should. And furthermore, the EF Tours is not only based in the United States, it's also based in the European Union. And just recently, throughout the European Union, there have been a multitude of bailouts, including one for $9 billion to Lufthansa German Airlines. Now, what does that mean, $9 billion? It means that the entire United States airline industry, including the Big Three, American, Delta, United... It means that the entire United States airline industry, including the big three, American, Delta, United, received collectively $25 billion. So there are monies coming to companies of, of traveling tours, and such as airlines, such as tour operators, which EF Tours is one of them. And we don't know what they're getting, if anything at all. And we have held accountable a small bus company, such as Bloom Bus, to report back to, to us diligently if they have any refunds or monies coming from federal or state bailouts. But yet, we're letting a company that's worth billions of dollars off the hook completely, and jeopardizing our students in the amount of over $37,500. So if my colleagues would sign on to this letter, it would be, of course, sent to Ms. Kate Bersef, who holds two roles at the EF Tours, one is president, and one is executive vice president of EF Education First. And hopefully, they'll take some more positive action and reimburse us, so that's what this letter is about. Thank you, Mr. Souza.
Thank you, Mr. Souza.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello, thank you, Madam Mayor. Our motion that we adopt the letter as written, and authorize the chairman to sign it on the committee's behalf and send it out.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, could we have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Fagan? You're on mute right now.
I apologize, I hit the wrong thing. Too many buttons in front of me. Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiori?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida? Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Thank you.
Madam, Madam Mayor, I have one thing under unfinished.
Sure.
I'm sorry, right, actually, is he going to do that first?
Yeah, if you don't mind, do we have any action item review?
I took it over, not to my knowledge.
Okay, all right, go right ahead then, Mr. Souza.
So in the, in the packet has the letter that was sent, the COVID-19 state funding letter. It was in the packet that was, we voted on that last week. I just wanted to let everyone know that that's been signed and sent out. So that's, that's been delivered to all of those, copied to all of those people that are on the letterhead. Thank you.
I'm not, okay, thank you, Mr. Souza. All set on unfinished business? Okay, we'll move on to critical items not reasonably anticipated, 48 hours in advance.
The only thing I have to say is that we'll see you in two weeks. And in two weeks, we're going to be, Mr. Cabral will have an update and talking about the reallocation funds again. So he'll have some documents for you over the next two weeks, and, and be talking to everyone individually. And that's what we did, that'll be the big topic for that, that meeting. Thank you, everyone, have a head, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I just got a news flash that $1.5 trillion was just voted on by the House of Representatives to bail out roads and schools.
Good news.
Hallelujah. Now let's wait and see when we get the money.
Can we have a motion to adjourn?
We want to take the money. Motion, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn, on a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiori?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Okay, night.
Thank you, have a wonderful weekend, everybody.